I'll call the meeting to order at 6:15 PM. Can we get the quorum established?
Yes.
Trustee Hack?
I'm here.
Trustee Lathan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis? Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here. All right, next we'll go to closed session. We have two items. Item A, public appointment, interim/acting superintendent, and B, public employee performance evaluation superintendent. So we will come back to open session at 7 PM.
Thank you.
Maya, can you help us reestablish the quorum?
Trustee Hack.
President.
Trustee Lathan.
Here.
Trustee Lewis. Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. Moving on to B, reports from closed session. There is no reportable action. Moving on to C, flag salute. Vice President Rocha, can you lead us in the flag salute?
Sure. Stand. Place your hand on your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll move on to 3D, approval of minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting of April 10th, 2024. If there's any comments or changes, now's a good time to speak. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Move approval.
I second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting of April 10th, 2024. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to 3E, the approval of minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting of May 8th, 2024. If there's any changes, say those now. Otherwise, I will entertain- If there's any changes, say those now. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Still move.
Second.
Great, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting of May 8th, 2024. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to item four, superintendent's report. Dr. Martinez.
Yes. Good evening, Board President Hernandez, Vice President Rocha, board members, and members of the public. Couple of items we wanted to cover. Last week, all of our high school graduations concluded, with two on Friday, Deer Valley and Antioch High School. During the week, over a thousand students, of course, high school, are now high school alumni of our district, were added to the rolls. We anticipate many amazing accomplishments from our students as they find their ways to careers, college, and community service. We have a special thanks to go out to the entire Maintenance and Custodial Department for their work in preparing our schools for graduation. The grounds were immaculate, and we were able to provide all of our students with a well-deserved send-off. Just yesterday, our own Nicole Vicner, remember her, the teacher at Bidwell High School, one of our Teachers of the Year. She's one of the four finalists in consideration for the Contra Costa County Teacher of the Year. The four finalists prepared and delivered speeches on the topic of what have you learned from your students. I told Nicole afterwards that as a 37-year educator, I was absolutely impressed by her speech, the authenticity she brought to her delivery, and that no matter the final decision by the committee, she is the tops in our, all of our books. So, we were thrilled to meet, to meet her, her husband, and her mother as well, and sister. And the last item that I have is the district, and it's a little not early enough. The district is holding another certificated recruitment fair on July 9th, July 9th. From 12 o'clock PM, noon to 5 o'clock, we will be hiring well-qualified teachers that day onsite and working to see how we can qualify others to join us in the endeavor of teaching our students. We'll be doing this at Prospects High School in the atrium. That's 820 West Second Street. We will have information on our Facebook page, our website. It's already out there on LinkedIn, and we're getting a lot of traction. So, we'll have a number of our administrative team working to get people into our classrooms. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Moving on to five, school reports. We have none. Six, public comments. A, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the public. We have one comment from Gavin Payton.
Good evening, school board. As the East County NAACP Youth Council, we just want to invite you guys to our Juneteenth celebration here in Pittsburgh at John Buckley Park at Saturday, June 15th, from noon to 5:00 PM at John Buckley Park, Railroad Avenue, and Fifth Street. It's a family event. You can look, our sponsors are Supervisor Federal Glover, as the East County NAACP Youth Council, the City of Pittsburgh, Future Builders, I believe Make, Making Move, Pittsburgh Unified School District, Mechanic Banks, and Read to Me. We came together to celebrate us and to show us and where we come now and how far we've come. Because with education, it is important, and even though we was deprived from that, and sometimes still is, we now made a change where we are now educating each other and educating others about who we really are. Thank you.
Thank you. On, moving on to 6B, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees. We have none. Moving on to 7, district reports. There are none. And then moving on to item 8, hearings. We have item 8A, the 2024-25 Local Control Accountability Plan and Budget Overview for Parents. So, I'll turn it over to Christina Barra.
Thank you. Good evening, board and our school community, and those listening in. This is our public hearing for our LCAP. Oh, do you have to?
We do the presentation first, and then we can open up the hearing.
Got you. So, just as a reminder, these are the requirements of an LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan. It is a requirement of our Local Control Funding Formula. It is something that must be written and adopted. It's written every three years. This is one of those unique years where we get to rewrite the LCAP, and it will be for the 2024 all the way to the 2027 school year. It's, it, just as a reminder, that it is, it's speaking specifically to our supplemental and concentration funds and how those are utilized to support our targeted students that are our low socioeconomic English learners and foster youth. And so, there are things that are in this plan, and then there are a lot of things that we do that are outside of this plan because it's not tied to supplemental concentration funds. But we will talk about that as we go along. And then this year, the Equity Multiplier has also been included, and I'll talk about that more in a bit. So, I just want to give you a quick overview. There were some changes to the LCAP from the California Department of Education, and so with that, there are three types of goals now. Whereas before, they didn't designate types of goals, now they have. The first one being, the first one being what they call a broad goal, and those are goals that are constant, they are less concentrated in scope, so they're, they're broad, and they affect more student groups and in terms of improving access. The second one, type of goal, is what they're calling focus goals. So, this is a newer goal. And so, what these do is they are intended to include a SMART goal, so they're time-bound, and they're very specific and measurable. And they are really targeting certain groups and certain actions. And so, then also, another type of focus goal is what is the Equity Multiplier goal. And so, as I think we recall, Equity Multiplier schools were identified based on high mobility rates. So, any school in our district that had 25% or more in mobility, they qualified, and as well as having a high socioeconomic percentage of greater than 70%. So, in the next slide, I'm going to just give you a quick look at who will be at the center of these focus goals. So, as a district, we are in differentiated assistance, and it's for two of our student groups, that are English learners, including our LTALs and our foster youth. And so, under that, you'll see for the areas in particular where the students have been in red for over a period of years, for our English learners, it's been in the areas of English Language Arts and Math, as well as College and Career readiness. Our foster youth have been in the red for chronic absenteeism, graduation rate, suspension rates, and college and career readiness. Our Equity Multiplier schools, yes?
That one's not in here. Is there another? Can you help me?
The correct one is online.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going through the paper and not.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize.
I was trying to catch.
Good catch. We'll get that, we'll get that.
Well, the one online is good, so people can still access it. Okay, great.
The Equity Multiplier schools, so those are the ones that have the 25% or more mobility, as well as 70% or more in socioeconomic disadvantage. That is Bidwell High School, Grant Elementary, Live Oak High, Prospects High, and Thomas Gaines Virtual Academy. The third and final type of goal in our LCAP this year is what they're calling Maintenance of Progress. And so, these are things that are just ongoing, and they are part of doing business. And so, we'll share in greater detail in the slides below. So, as you know, as you know, we participated, well, we contracted with the National Center of Urban School Transformation, and they conducted equity audits at all, all of our schools, including the district participated as well. This included classroom visits in every single classroom in all of those schools. They also conducted focus groups with students, with teachers, administrators, and parents, including district administrators, and I believe the members of the board. And honestly, this was the perfect timing with the new rewrite of the LCAP. So, it was help, it was helpful and informed some of the actions and the details underneath, the detailed actions. So, in the next slide, based on NCUST research, what they have determined is they're looking for schools that what they call outlier schools. So, these are schools that have high socioeconomic populations. They have high populations of students of color, marginalized students, yet still, those schools are performing above state averages. And so, they've taken the characteristics of those schools that have made them successful, and they've put them into these three categories. First being positive transformational culture, so really seeing our students as scholars. Challenging curricula, making sure that we have challenging curriculum, but also high expectations for our students that they can achieve at those levels. And effective engaging instruction, and that really is focusing in on achieving at mastery, at this, at grade level standards specifically. So, with that, these were the recommendations. So, all, every single school in our district received their school-specific report that highlighted the recommendations and findings for their school. And as a district, we also received a district report. So, I'm highlighting the recommendations that came out of our district report that also helped inform our LCAP. So, starting with the recommendations under positive transformational culture, we have, of the recommendation of continuing to recruit and retain diverse staff that represents our student body, making sure that our professional development is aligned to our school vision and goals, improving our attendance while reducing chronic absenteeism and reducing behaviors, especially through means like self-regulation, restorative practices, and so forth. On the next slide, we see the recommendations for challenging curricula. So, focusing on mastery, and then questions, making sure that the questions that are being asked of our students, the tasks that are being put in front of them are rigorous and aligned and rigorous at a grade level standard. And that we have weekly observations of teachers, not only from their administrators, but in, whether it's site administrators, district administrators, but also their peers. So, in the next slide, the recommendations under effective and engaging instruction included making sure that the instruction that we're providing to our English learners within their content classes is integrated that, so part of what the law requires is that we have a designated time for English learners based on their level of proficiency to get direct support. But additionally, in every core subject area, they also need to have strategies embedded in the instruction so that the students can access the learning. And on the non-second, the second item there is focused professional development. Truly understanding for our teachers what mastery learning is and understanding the progressions of learning. Under three, we have checks for understanding. So, while teachers are teaching, they need to be pausing throughout, maybe giving exit tickets, understanding along the way during a lesson what the students are, are understanding so that they can change and adjust instruction as they go. And the fourth and final one is students having multiple opportunities to demonstrate their mastery, that it's not just based on a high-stakes test or not, or just a certain type of test, but they have multiple opportunities and in different formats to be able to demonstrate their mastery, including for them to understand where they are in their learning progression and setting goals for themselves and monitoring that. So, while we were, you know, finalizing and wrapping up our year with NCUST, that report has, has added to and has evolved our vision in our district. So, this is year three. We're going into year three of our district revision, vision. It was first focused on what we called the wellness wheel. And in that, we were really, when we looked at what NCUST was sharing with us, we realized the wellness wheel and some of the terms within were more deficit-minded. And so, we've really shifted some of that language to be more assets-based. And so, at the center, you see that it's now an empowerment wheel, not just a wellness wheel. And so, our goal is that every learner, we are cultivating excellence, equity, and excellence. And so, in that image, and I don't, yeah, you can see it pretty good on the screen. So, one of the things that we had added into the top bubble where it says Standards Mastery-Based Learning, which was a big part of the NCUST findings, and that had been a part of our vision, but we did add a circle there, speaking specifically about rigorous curricula. So, we're adding, we've added that piece in based on our findings. So, I just wanted to share how our vision has evolved on our new learnings and our growth. So, in the next slide, I want to talk just a little bit about the involvement of our LCAP committee and a survey that we have submitted, or that we provided to all folks in our district. That includes teachers, administrators, staff at the school site, as well as parents and students. So, we sent out a survey. We got about a little over 600 responses, half of those being parents. And so, we, we got, we received a lot of great feedback from them. In addition to our final LCAP committee meeting that we held on April 16th, and they also got to see the feedback and add additional recommendations. And so, all of that, I'm going to share some of the findings from the surveys, as well as the LCAP committees. So, in the next slide, I'm going to talk about the top three, and these priorities were connected to that vision I just showed you, that 3.0 empowerment wheel. So, this, under Standards Mastery Learning, the priorities of our LCAP participants and survey, the folks that took the survey, was math instruction and support came out on top, that we need to spend time and energy working toward improving math, English literacy instruction and supports, and science. Under the resilient-centered practices, making sure that we are prioritizing social-emotional learning, nutritious school meals, and sports program. And under the culturally-relevant practices, making sure that our classroom, that our classroom engagement strategies are reflective and honor the students that are in the classroom, that we expand on our visual performing arts and our career, college and career support services. So, part of that survey, as well as part of the committee meeting in April, was for them to share, not just, there were some, you know, kind of fill-in-the, in-the-dots kind of things, but then there was a lot of areas under each section for comment. And so, what we did is we took all of the comments and marked, kind of tallied the comments, the trends, the things that keep, kept coming up. And so, with that, this particular slide are the top comments. These are the ones that were said, that were repeated over and over again. So, making sure we're focusing on math instruction and looking at our curriculum and professional development associated with math, expanding and improving our art, music, and dance programs at all levels, expanding and improving our sports programs at all levels, and especially at the elementary schools. The sports camps that they had this year in elementary were a huge hit, and they want to see more of that. And then expanding class size reduction efforts. The next kind of layer of recommendations that came up repeatedly, we're providing more vocational classes at our high schools, improving instructional practice, practices, resources in support of our English learners, providing more training for our special education teachers and staff, improving communication strategies with parents within and beyond the website messages and areas because sometimes our families don't receive those through those means, and provide our instructional aids in special education and lower-grade classrooms where needed. where needed. In the final wave, these are the other ones that came up repeatedly, was to improve our focus and consistency, including instructional practices, first with literacy and Spanish, incorporating more ethnic studies and contributions of cultures across all other levels, expanding our dual immersion program, which is, has been growing and continues to, increase the options for professional development, expand and improve the after-school program offerings, provide consistent expectations for behavior management, including cell phone usage, and expand the library technician positions to full-time. So with that, I'm going to be sharing with you highlights of the goals and actions in our new LCAP for the 2024-27, so the next three years. And I want to just, on the next slide, I'm just showing you one more time that our district vision, you'll notice those three big areas, the three green, solid green, starting at the top with the standards mastery-based learning, and then you go around clockwise, there's culturally relevant, and then resilient-centered practices. And so we have, because the last time we did our LCAP, we did not have this vision, so we have restructured our LCAP to model this vision. And so that's what I will share. So starting first in the next slide, our first broad goal is focused on that standards mastery-based learning. So here, you'll see that in that green box, this is the goal, that we want to empower our students to identify their learning targets and monitor their progress towards mastering grade-level standards. We want our students to own their learning, not just be something that teachers, oh, this is the grade you got. Students need to understand what their goal is, what they're trying to attain, and be able to make that progress and know what they need to learn next to master. And so under that, you'll see the state standards and curriculum, so all of the content areas, as well as, you'll see some of more of the call-outs around the NCUST recommendations. So having our priority standards and proficiency scales, which is something that we've had, and adding in that rigorous and aligned to standards, that instruction that's rigorous and aligned, as well as having an infrastructure in place where collaboration can happen, observations, feedback, and celebration. Professional development is also there, so this is included in this particular goal. Our English learner program, which also includes specific actions for our long-term English learners, and our opportunity alternative program lives in this goal, as well as the services and professional development that we have for our special education program. Next, in Goal Two, it goes into the next bubble where we are looking at resilience-centered practices. So there, our goal is to promote environments that prioritize emotional well-being, resilience, and holistic development for students, staff, and the broader school community. So here is where we have our social emotional learning efforts. I've listed a few of them, so our counseling and mental health services are here, our wellness centers are funded out of the LCAP, positive behavior interventions and supports, what we call PBIS. We also have an action focused on community-building initiatives and resources, which also, all of these things are there, and also improve our attendance, so having restorative practices, repairing harm that happens, so schools, students feel comfortable to come back to school after conflict. Having, we are, we have piloted this year an alternative to suspension program at a couple of our schools, and we are expanding that in the next three years, so that we are keeping students in school. If we just suspend them, they don't learn, and it doesn't solve the problem, and it keeps them out of school, which adds to chronic absenteeism. And then we are in the implementation, or the preparation stage of offering community schools in our, on our campuses. So we are still going out for grants to get the implementation, but right now, we are working under the planning grant. And our homeless and foster youth resources are all under Goal Two as well. In the next slide, you'll see Goal Three for culturally relevant practices. So our goal here is to cultivate inclusive school communities where every student, parent, and staff member feels acknowledged, listened to, and valued. And valued was an intentional word. We have here, under this goal, we have our newcomer center, which supports our students with, our families with English learners. They can come. It also supports our teachers. If they have a newcomer that is new to the country and they need resources to support that student, they can all go and check those out. Our seal of biliteracy is here, our growing ethnic studies effort and program is here. So we have, we are preparing for the required graduation requirement course that will be for the students in the class of 2030. But we are also piloting middle school curriculum that is focused on ethnic studies, because our standard curriculum does not tell the full story, and a lot of our students aren't seen in the curriculum. And so that is the effort that we're doing right now, is to provide supplemental curriculum and resources to be able to offer that. Project-based learning, visual performing arts, and all of our efforts around college and career supports, services, and programs also live under Goal Three. The next broad goal, Goal Four, is focused on the multi-tiered systems of support. So our goal here is to improve our systems of support for students who are struggling to reduce the percentage of general education students across our district who are referred for special education. So often, what we are seeing more and more, and we've heard that presentation previously around our special education numbers, we are referring students at an alarming rate, and a large part of the reasons why they are qualifying is because they are two or years below grade level. But there's much more we can do to improve our systems so that we're supporting those students sooner, so that they don't have, that special education, it doesn't feel like the only answer for them if they don't have a learning disability. The next goal, Goal Five. So this is our first of two focus goals. The first one, as I had mentioned before, is our English learners. And so under here, we, and I can't read it on my screen because it's super small, on my paper, but you can see in the green box, that is the SMART goal that we have written specifically for our English learners, and they are directly connected to the areas in which the English learners are in that red category on the California school dashboard. And so the actions there are to, they are going to create quarterly assessments, also to monitor the growth of our English language arts, math, and English language development. They are starting agency meetings with students. So what this is, is they are set, they sit down with students individually, and they chart. A lot of our English learners don't understand what the LCAP represent, and how they, what is required to be considered reclassified as an English proficient student. So it's really mapping out what they are required to do so that they can get out, so that they can be reclassified, and when they get into secondary, they can have some, an external elective, so that they're not taking an English language development course. And then making sure that we are offering the right professional development opportunities, not only for our special education teachers, but our instructional assistants. They crave professional development, and we want to be able to provide that, because they are also instructors in the classroom. On Goal Five, the next one is still Goal Five, because this one is focused specifically to our foster youth. So again, in that blue box, is a SMART goal that is directly representative of the areas in which our foster youth are in the red. And so the actions that we have in that, under that goal, is connected to mental health services. We know a lot of our foster youth are dealing with a lot of trauma, they come to us with a lot of special needs, and we want to make sure that we are meeting them at the door, and we're not waiting. We are saying, okay, we want to do an intake meeting with the families and the student, find out what services those students may need, and get them started from day one, and not wait to get into, you know, a few weeks of school, months of school before we provide support and assistance. The next slide is Goal Six. It's, again, the focus goals dedicated to our Equity Multiplier Schools. In that blue, or in the green box, you will see all of the schools that are there, as well as the areas in which we are focused. What we are funding with our Equity Multiplier money is having, we want to create mobile truancy teams. So essentially, this is a team of people, because one of the things that we've learned with chronic absenteeism, we've learned a lot of things. One is that it's not just a student problem, oftentimes, it's a family that's in need. And so these teams would include a person that can monitor all of that, stay in communication with families, go out to families and do home visits. It includes counselors to provide some support services, and this would also include transportation. We are looking to have vans where we can pick students up if they're not showing up and bring them to school. We also have funded some additional interventions and acceleration programs at our secondary and at our elementary, so literacy blocks, additional course sections, GED courses, we're expanding that, and the additional supports for our opportunity program. And then student and family outreach. So having our, assigning a restorative practices facilitator to our alternative schools that are our Equity Multiplier Schools, and as well as having a special education teacher on a special assignment, and it can work directly with the families in supporting their needs with their students. We're almost there, folks. Sorry, I know this is really long. I appreciate you all staying awake. The last goal is that Maintenance of Progress goal, Goal Seven. It is focused on effective and conducive learning environments. Here's where you see our highly qualified and diverse staff. It's where we fund our teacher pre-induction and induction program, so that is new, pre-induction is new. Previously, only our induction programs, teachers received support and mentoring, and thanks to negotiations with the teachers' union, we now are able to include our pre-induction folks as well, and making sure that they have those supports equally. It also includes our facilities improvements, instructional technology, we're always needing to improve and swap out our aging devices, school learning commons, class size reductions, and program monitoring, so that we can make sure that we're spending all of these funds the way that they were designed. And the next section is focused on the budget. So part of what we have to share with you this evening is the parent overview, the budget overview for parents, and I would like to invite up, and he's already here, Director Ed Dacus, to share about that.
Hi, good evening, good evening. I just have a couple of slides regarding the LCF budget overview for parents. The budget overview for parents is created for parents and other educational partners to help understand the district's LCAP budget. It's a snapshot of our LCFF revenues and planned expenditures for the upcoming year, and it also outlines how we will meet our increased and improved service requirements for our foster English learners and socio-economically disadvantaged students. Each year, the overview does need to be adopted at the same time that we adopt our LCAP. This graphic is just a total projected revenue for Aniac Unified School District, of which 210 million, 210, 210.2 million dollars is local control funding formula funds. Of that, that's the larger pie chart, taking that 210 million and separating it out, you can see that 47.7 million is the S and C, or the supplemental and concentration funds. These funds are generated based on the enrollment of our high-need students. Again, those are our foster youth, English learners, and socio-economically disadvantaged I've included this chart, the contributing action chart, this is actually found on page 137 of the LCAP document, and this just shows our projected percentage of increased and improved services to be at 33%. But if you look closer down that line there, we have a LCAP planned contributing expenditures of just under 55 million, which actually equals 35.5%. So we're, we have a projected percentage, but our planned percentage is actually exceeding that, which is a good thing. And then the last slide is just an update from 2324, and it focuses on our increased and improved services for our high-need students. And the top bar there is what was budgeted as expenditures at just, right at, right around 48.6 million dollars, and our actual expenditures came in at 46.5. This 2.1 million dollar difference did not impact services to students, as most of these actions, or most of these expenditures were in the actions around vice principals, visual and performing arts, and professional development, and socioeconomic, excuse me, social emotional learning initiatives. These costs were actually able to be shifted into some funds that we had from federal and state resources that were not part of the LCAP, so monies that were expiring and that we needed to make sure we utilized. And that was, I think that was the last slide I had, yeah.
So we will be happy to take any questions you have. And I apologize, I just realized that the backside of the pamphlet you got was not there. So you got every other slide, my apologies.
It's all right, we got it in here.
Okay.
All right, yes, does anyone have, does anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, Vice President, yeah.
I just, I'm amazed. I love everything you've said, and I love all, everything, the direction we're going. My fear is the money. That's the fear. Because when we know that we have a good year, that I've heard, and that the following year, we'll have to start looking at things to reduce, how do we fit that with the plan that you have? I mean, is there special different kind of money than what we are talking about?
Well, and I can let Liz jump in too, but I mean, the LCAP, this is what the LCAP funds. I think the challenge really comes into play is when we have one-time monies and all of these other monies that are slowly peeling, or not slowly, they're quickly peeling back at this point. And so that's where we really have to prioritize and determine what things are going to have to go back into the LCAP, and then those cuts will happen. But right now, this money is dedicated for what's in it, at least for this coming year.
Okay, so there's, you're clearing it, let me clear that. So that means that everything you have here is already, is going to be paid.
It's budgeted for.
And to be paid.
For the coming year.
And then I congratulate you then, in the direction that we're going, because it's certainly.
Thank you.
Different than what we have had.
And then what the annual update does at the end of the year is we have to deter, we have to share with the public in the annual update what the material differences were, and we have to explain why. And so that's when those explanations will occur in the following year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ebar, for the presentation, and I too see the shift and the connections to what high-performing schools, districts do with students who are just like our students. So thank you. I do have a few questions and comments. One is, what is the limited number of goals we can have? I know we have our broad goals and our focus goals.
There's not a limit necessarily. We, so one of the things when I, when Ed and I have the pleasure of meeting with the county regularly to go through our LCAP, especially in a year where it's changing. And one of the things that they told us early on at the first meeting is they said, do not put anything, do not put any goals and actions in the LCAP that is not going to be funded by the LCAP. Because what I had done in the previous LCAP is I really wanted the LCAP to be a document where we kind of stated all of our goals, you know, because I felt like the public needed to know what we're working on in totality. But if there are not S and C dollars assigned, they don't want it included. they don't want it included. And so we talked about that, and we talked about trying to find a mechanism to share with the public, like, here are all the things we're working on, they're just not being funded through LCAP. And so that's kind of a, you know, a dance that we'll have to, to play to make sure the public's aware.
I asked that question because we have seven goals, I believe. And, you know, when it comes to change, more than a couple is, usually doesn't get done. And so just wondering why we have so many goals, and because if we want change.
Well, part, part, yeah, no, I get exactly what you're saying. And so that's, that's why last year we had four. We had four goals. But now with the, so essentially, we still have those kind of, those four goals. But then with the focus goals, with those new requirements, we had to have one. We had to have one for the Equity Multiplier focus goal. We had to have one for student groups that were consistently performing in red, which is why we're in differentiated assistance. We had to have a Maintenance of Progress. So those were like the three additional that we needed to include. So if I, if this helps, our actions are the same. Our, like, when you look at the number of actions, because we have to also manage it on the backside when it comes to budget. And we didn't want to have a million actions that now our business services are trying to like, you know, hunt down and, and create all of these different codes. And so when you drill down to the actions, it's the same number of actions, it's just more goals with less actions underneath.
We had a lot of actions.
Like in Goal One, in our previous LCAP, I think we had like 17 actions. In this particular one, we don't have as many.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So there's less actions, but more goals.
Okay. And I'm still going to.
They're separated out differently.
Yeah. I understand that. And I'm still going to stick to what research says and what I know is true, which is we have too many goals and too many actions.
Right.
And when you have too many goals and too many actions, you get the results that we've been getting, because you can't focus on all those things realistically.
And I think, I think with the guidance of NCUST and what we're looking, focusing on, this is our three-year plan. So in year one, maybe we are just focusing really hard in a couple of those areas. But then in year two, it might be a couple of other areas, but still within the LCAP. So it has to, it has to cover that span of three years.
All right. And then, so for vocational and CTE courses, do all of those courses for students who take them, are they all, do they all meet the A through G requirements?
So CTE courses, oftentimes, they're meeting like the capstone requirements. There's different, some are A to G, some are just meeting the, I wish I could speak more eloquently about it. If Dr. Wisely was here, she could do it. She knows that backwards and forwards. But there are certain, they have to complete CTE courses. There's a pathway, a continuum of courses that makes them a CTE completer. And then ADG, A to G is kind of another layer of coursework that the state requires, or that the UCs and state schools require.
So A through G for folks who need clarification are the requirements that students need to meet in high school to apply for four-year colleges, whether it's a UC or.
Or CSU.
One of the Cal States colleges. And I'm asking because I know our A through G are, that's a part of the college and career readiness, and we haven't met that. And then also, when I was at the Deer Valley High School graduation, there was a list of students who met A through G, and it wasn't all the students who graduated. And so I was just curious why.
A to G is a broader requirement than CTE.
Yes.
Like ADG, it has some courses that the students have to take in CTE. It might be, I can't, I don't have it in front of me. It might be 10 credits.
Okay. So anyway, I just wanted to think about that, because as, as we're supporting kids who want to take vocational classes or CTE, but they might change their mind and decide to go to a four-year, they won't be able to go. So that's how, you know, so how do we help make some of those courses, A through G, or is it even impossible? I don't know.
They're limited. So they, you, it counts, but through A to G, only a certain amount it counts towards, in terms of CTE, if that makes sense.
Uh-huh. And then culturally responsive, culturally relevant, I'm hoping we can update the language to the more current term, which is culturally responsive. It does have a different meaning in terms of responsive is more like thinking about identity-affirming, making sure that teachers have strong pedagogy around how to be responsive to students. And then relevant is more, is kind of an outdated term. So I'm hoping we can change that.
Absolutely. That's part of this, is to provide that feedback so we can make those changes.
And then alternatives to suspensions. My one concern about that is once we get into that work, and you, you all may have started it, or we might have started already, is some, that, that doesn't change the culture and climate. It just says, instead of suspending you and sending you home, you're going to have in-school suspension.
No.
Or you're going to come on Saturday, or whatever.
That's not, the way our program is designed is not that.
So how is our program?
I can, I can share that with you in a Friday board in greater detail, but what essentially it is, it's a three-day program that the students attend after school. And there's, there are activities in which the student has to go through. So there's a reflection piece to it. They're depending on, say, I got into a fight. They, they read, they have to read an article and provide a presentation. I think a lot of the kids do it by PowerPoint. There's a number of things that the students, it's intended to be, because a suspension by itself, whether it's in-school or out-of-school, it doesn't teach anything about the behavior, the impact of behavior, how it made the community of the school feel, and so on and so forth. So what that program does is it work, it's, it's meant to be a teaching mechanism, where the students actively evolved, involved in it. And I will say, I don't know what the data is all the way to the end of the year. They started this at Park Middle School in January. And at the time that I was provided an update, I want to say it was maybe around March, 33 students had participated, and only two had kind of had another incident. No, I think it was three, but two of them hadn't completed the program yet. So there, we're seeing a really profound change in behavior because there's learning behind it. And the families are also incredibly supportive.
So I'm hoping that in addition to that, because just being a prior administrator, sometimes that can still be horrifying, because we're still, something in the school day is not working if that many kids are even being referred to that. Does that make sense? So thinking about shifting the culture and climate of the school and schools, but then a district as a whole, so that we don't even have to get there. Does that make sense? And I think, sure, if you have a few kids at a time and they need to do that, that's fine. But, but it's still, it's concerning that we even have to have that for that many kids. So something else is happening. And it, and I always say, it's not just the kids, it's the adults. During our Equity Committee meeting, one of the students said, who was a part, we had two students who were part of that committee meeting, those meetings. And one of the students said, you know, there, there's not basically, and I'm paraphrasing, there's not levels to what we do. So she said, sometimes students get suspended for fighting, but another student will get suspended for talking in class. Like, where is it right? And so just even those type things, I'm wondering how we're monitoring that, how we're providing teachers with, or equipping teachers and staff to be able to work with students. So something needs to change, because we have very high suspension rates.
Absolutely.
And that's unacceptable. And, and the alternative to suspension is okay, but that's still not answering the question.
It's, yeah, it's not everything, but it's one thing.
Yeah. And then lastly, I have, what are the kind of systemic ways to educate students and families about like the high school requirements and college requirements? Excuse me. I met with the NAACP Youth Council President and one of the Vice Presidents, and that was one of the questions in terms of how do we actually prepare students and families so when they come in, a lot of times when we talk to families, they don't know, and kids don't know, right? Not all of them. It might be the kids who are in AP courses or, right? And, and college access should not be, it's not a privilege. It's like, we're preparing you to go, right? Whether you choose to go is your, what you decide to do. And that's when I went back to the, the A through G requirements in Deer Valley High School. I was actually quite horrified that every kid was not on there. It was like a select group. And A through G is basic. That is so basic. Four years of English, three years of math, or whatever it is, that's not, that's basic. What are you doing every day? You go to school every day. So those are the things you should be doing. So this is definitely not criticism, just something for us to think about. Like, if we really want to be a high-performing school district, how are we setting ourselves up for that is important. But I do appreciate the shift. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, Trustee Heck. Any questions?
No, no questions.
Great. And then I just have a few. Can you kind of explain again the Equity Multiplier sites, like what those are and what that means?
So that, like I said, they're identified because they have 25% or more of their students are coming in and out. So there's a mobility where there, it's just, it's coming and going. And it makes sense, right? Because you're talking about your alternative schools. So yes, there's kids coming and going, as well as Thomas Gaines. So we do have a number of coming and going there as well. I think we recently learned, or Liz Robbins recently learned, that in, in ongoing years, independent study programs might be, not be qualified, just because of the nature of their program. But for now, we do, we are receiving that money for, at least for next year. And, and then the high socioeconomic. So they have to have both. They have to be over 25% of mobility rate and over 70% low socioeconomic.
So those sites are then receiving extra money on top of the supplemental and concentration?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Correct.
And then can you talk about how it is that we navigate things like the empowerment wheel, the NCUST report, the surveys that we got, and LCAP? And like, you know, how do we think about aligning these things? Like, are we mapping the, you know, the main parts of the empowerment wheel to goals that we have? Are we mapping the NCUST recommendations to parts of the, like, I just don't know. Like, there's so much information, so many goals and priorities and things that we want done. How does that ultimately kind of all come together?
So, I'm a linear person. So where it started for us, it actually started several years ago when we started working with Marzano Research. And, and this was really at the request of some of our administrators that had gone and wanted to have a conversation around standards mastery and understanding, what does that mean? What is mastery? What are priority standards and proficiency skills, kind of knowing that progression of learning? And so it started there. We had a group of teachers across our district that participated in identifying what our priority standards and proficiency skills were for us in English Language Arts and Math. And then in, then it started, we started to kind of move toward that. And I think that's right about when COVID hit. And another associate, associate within Marzano Research was, at that time, developing what he called the Wellness Wheel. It was Dr. Mike Rule. And that included standards mastery, but understanding that trauma impacts learning, as well as students that don't feel valued, that also impacts learning. And so we had adopted our version of the Wellness Wheel based on some of the initiatives that we were already doing. And what I liked about, what we liked about the Wellness Wheel initially and why it became, we gravitated toward it as our vision, was the interdependence of all of those things. You can't, what I, my experience has been in education for so long is that we talked about academics, we talked about behavior, social-emotional work, and then we talked about cultural pieces, but we didn't talk about their, how they're all related. When you have strategies in your classroom that are, are culturally responsive, that is going to improve, how you structure your lesson and include that will improve the outcomes for students. How you, an example I always think of is students. How we test them should be culturally responsive. It should also be trauma-informed. It should, it should take into consideration that students have different assets, and they should be allowed different ways to demonstrate their mastery. And so that's how that piece came into play. And then with what, when we brought in NCUST, and we were looking through that report, trying to make that our district vision, how, what we were learning from the NCUST recommendations, how that tied into our vision. And so that's how it worked for us this year, is we took those, that district report, we adapted and evolved our district vision piece and, and gave it the 3.0 version. And then that is what ultimately led into the, the structure of our LCAP.
Got it. So I guess.
Does that make sense?
I think so. Maybe to ask an even more specific question, you know, if someone said like, you know, where do we see the influence of the empowerment wheel or the NCUST report in our LCAP? Is it like in our metrics, in the actions that we have there, in the goals? Yeah, is there anything like that that comes to mind?
It's, it's all of it. It's, it's absolutely all of it. So it's in the specific goals you will read, but it's also embedded within the actions.
Got it. And then I guess, then following up on that question, thinking about, can you talk about like, how the accountability pieces of the, the LCAP work? Because we set all of these, you know, metrics and goals. You know, at what point do we look at them? What happens if we don't meet those goals that we set for ourselves? And, you know, any of those.
We have to explain that. So one of the things, that's also a new feature of the new LCAP, is that for every, when you go into the document now, you're going to see, under the metrics section for each goal, there will be more local measures. In addition to under each action, there's also a section that we have to spell out specifically what metrics are being used for that particular action. That wasn't the case in the previous LCAPs. We just have the metrics section up above. It was a combination of some local and state metrics, but it wasn't really specific to each action. Now each action has a section that calls out specific metrics for every action.
So then like, what happened with, you know, looking at like the LCAP that we just concluded, there's like a number of metrics there where we did meet our goals, there's a number there where we didn't. What was like the, what's our process as we look at those? And how do we reflect and move forward from when we do and don't meet our metrics?
So there's a document that we work with, with our LCAP Committee and our district staff as well. And what it did is it takes, and I'm happy to share it, I think I had shared it with Dr. Jag last year. It, it has every action, and there's a column for where you check the level of implementation, because sometimes you can't, you can't really measure effectiveness if you're not, it's not fully implemented. So the first was to make comments on where we were in terms of implementation. Then the next comment, column was focused on effectiveness. Was it effective? And then the final column was, well, then what changes need to occur? Like, what was missing? Was the professional development not aligned? Was, were we not able to hire the staff? Whatever it is, we, we delineate and call out what the issue was.
Got it. And then I think the last question I have is probably for Mr. Dacus, looking at that slide where we had that difference in the budget and the expenditure. So then what, what does happen to that, that amount there? Does that like roll over to the next year's LCAP budgeting, or what happens with that difference there?
Yeah, it, it becomes part of the carryover, which is accounted for, if you go back one more slide. Just using the 2324, notice there's a carryover piece to it, which then adds into the new percentage for improvement. So, yeah.
Got it. And I guess, do, do we ever think about, or how do we navigate, when we do have the, that kind of additional funds that are below what we budgeted, do we usually plan for that rollover? Or is there opportunities to think about, should we be spending that money now? Like, do we have that kind of flexibility? Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking, you know, I, I feel like some people could say like, well, you know, our students need these resources now, so why have we not spent this, you know, $2 million now and instead waited for it to roll over?
I think, and it kind of goes to, Trustee Rose's comment about the, you know, we, we had this influx of funding coming out of COVID, and all of that is expiring. And so we're wanting to make sure we fully utilize that. So let's take that money and make sure we can spend it in these parameters that we have, because we know that this will carry over, and we can continue to maintain programs and maybe avoid some of the reductions that we're looking, you know, that we're worried about. That, that, that's, that's the frame that I can put it in. Yeah.
Okay, that, that makes sense. And then I guess, the, I guess the last question I guess that brings up to me is, I guess because of the way that we get these like supplemental and concentration. I guess because of the way that we get these like supplemental and concentration grants, as we think about like these goals and the programs associated with them, do we have as much worry about being able to fund these particular programs and projects? Because, understanding that, right, otherwise, in general, education funding is not looking great. But because of the way that we receive this funding, is this something that we technically don't think about as being like in danger of not being able to fund some of these things? Or is there still things to consider there?
Yeah, it's based on the LCFF funding, which you'll see in the budget. And for example, from, going from the budget year that we're in now, that ends on June 30, going to the new, the LCFF amount of money that we're getting is less, so that there is in danger. Depends on how the state funds Prop 98. And that's the whole pot of the money. LCFF is the largest part of what the state funds us. So it definitely ties into, it could, it's very volatile. Based on how we are funded from the state.
And then I guess the question that follows up from that is, you know, how does that then affect? Right, we have a three-year projection and we don't know how, you know, the state's going to end up funding us year. So how do we think about those things in terms of projecting out for the full three-year of the LCAP? Do we make some of the same assumptions we make when we do the budget? Or how does that work?
Yeah, we'll go over that in just a minute. You'll see some of my multi-year assumptions and some of the reductions that we have to make in the future years to balance the budget.
Got it. So when we're putting together the LCAP, we're using the budget and the projection budgets that we're doing to kind of inform the way that we're putting together this three-year plan of the LCAP?
Yes.
All right, that's, I mean, all the questions? Yes. Yeah, we'll go to trustee Lathan then.
Okay, go ahead.
This is for Ms. Ibarra. I'm just talking about shifting language. You talked about shifting from deficit to asset-based language. So just thinking about the shift from trauma-informed to healing-centered engagement. That's work by Dr. Sean Genwright, and it is so empowering. And it's not that you're not, you're not focusing on trauma, but you, you are really focusing on how that healing-centered part for students and staff. So just a thought.
Are you, are you speaking of the, the big green or?
Wherever there is, wherever it says trauma-informed. Yeah. It is a different mindset, because it is shifting to asset-based and it's shifting to healing. So it's not necessarily the same practices, but there are a lot of, a lot of the same practices.
Thanks, President Rocha.
Okay. What I was thinking, when I saw this and it says, I think I've heard you say, the agency meetings with students and the understanding of reclassification? When I was at some of the ELAC meetings, parents are concerned about other parents not understanding the reclassification, how important it is to do it early. And they said, that's where the information needs to go to parents somehow, like a step-by-step effort. Because if you don't have that, and she said, I would go home and practice and practice with my student to make sure that they were going to pass the tests. And if a child isn't given that opportunity at home, then they're on their own. And if they don't feel like it's that important, then you just continue on in the years and never be reclassified.
I know that it's covered during our DLAC meetings, but I don't know if, how much is being covered at our ELAC, but I'll certainly convey that.
And sometimes it is the fact that the parents that are coming to ELAC are more understanding of what's going on. And it's the parents that need to come, that come on a basis maybe to see the teacher when they have the reports, that that needs to be emphasized on that reclassification.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, trustee Lathan.
I just want to piggyback on trustee Rocha's comment, because it goes back to like the A through G. If a parent doesn't go to ELAC meetings, how will they know? So a lot of the things that we're talking about, teachers can actually do, right? How do teachers educate families? How does the principal, is it in the handbook? Like, where can, where can our families get empowered about what it takes to reclassify? And then also A through G requirements and what it means if you do or don't take all your A through G courses. And so those are the things that I'm thinking about in terms of providing staff resources, so not leaving it up to a parent to go to a meeting versus, this is the way we do business as a district. We're always updating parents verbally, in writing, on the website. Like, this is how we, this is how we do it. Because otherwise, parents don't know, they're working all day. So if they don't show up at an ELAC meeting, how do they know? And then also for the educators to educate and empower students very clearly. And you said, Ms. Ibarra, for students to have their own goals, like, that's a part of it. So if that's a goal, for me to reclassify or to move up in ELD levels, what does that mean? What does it look like? What do I need to be proficient in? How do I actually learn that? And the same for A through G. So it feels like this is a good time to build the empowerment pieces into how we're also working with students and families on a daily basis. Which means educators have to be educated on that.
Yeah.
All right, the next step we have here is to make sure that we open up this public hearing. So I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. And then we do have a comment from Dr. Kimberly Payton.
Good evening, thank you. I just have a few comments. I'm personally really glad that the district is now moving forward to come out of the old adage, if you've always do what you've always done, you're always going to get the same result. So I think I'm really promised that by listening to the report tonight, that we're moving in that direction. I just had a few comments. The first one was as to, I think, a little bit what Dr. Lathan said. Research shows when you have too many goals, they often don't get met. So in thinking about that, I just want to know if the staff on the board are considering some things that move across all the goals. For instance, I was just hearing a lot about the A to G requirements. And those, in high-performing districts, the A to G requirements are a standard. They're not like something that's an option to achieve. It's, it's where you need to be and build up from there. And as I would like to see all the scholars of this district move up, I just hope that we can get to the point at the beginning of the year, we let parents know what their students need to succeed in that grade. Not just at, by, you know, we're going to read this book or do this particular subject matter, but to know where their benchmark is so that they're a high achiever, especially to go into the next year. I also hope that since summer programs are not what they should be for a lot of families, I would hope that as we, as you look to meeting your goals and look at the end of the year, that you might consider letting parents know for your students to be equipped for next year, this is the reading material we're looking at, these are the math standards, letting them know where the benchmarks are, because they may not have a chance to attend an ELAC meeting, a PTA meeting, or whatever evening meeting. If, if we could get that out to them and also let the students know that this is important and this is their new benchmark, because there are high-achieving students and scholars in this district. My second comment is on Goal Four as part of that plan. Since according to the reports, there's a high staff turnover in the district, is that something that's going to be looked at as a motivational piece to retain teachers? That you're setting benchmarks, not just for students, also for them, and giving them that welcome feel that they're a part of this achieving plan for this now district that is moving to be a high-achieving district? Just something to consider. And then when you look at Goals Five, well, it's a little confusing, it was Slides 25 and 26. When you talk about foster youth and trauma youth, are you going to consider meeting with them monthly as well? So that it's not just the foster youth, because trauma youth is trauma youth, and they still need that attention? Thank you.
Thank you. And then we do have an additional comment from Gavin Payton.
My question is referring to the suspension, because you guys did mention something about that in the hearing. So if we're getting suspended for like talking back and stuff like that, isn't that just a tad bit extreme for that type of thing? And second, can we find different alternatives? Or is there like other ways? Because that wasn't fully clear to me. Because there's other things that we get suspended for, for, we get suspended for a lot of things, but we don't necessarily get this detention or just sent to the principal office or sent home for the day, stuff like that. We're, we're not like that. It's the often, especially for African-Americans, we're not considered that. We're the first ones to get suspended just like that. And are the people that don't look like us, they're, they get, they get like a slap on the wrist. They get, they get the benefits. So I just want to make sure it's equal for everyone on top of that and not just for a particular group of people. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have no more comments for this public hearing, so I will close the public hearing. Great, so moving on then to 8B, 2024-25 Preliminary Budget Public Hearing.
All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight, as you know, we are doing the public hearing for, excuse me, for our 2425 budget adoption. And then it will be presented at the next board meeting for approval. I do want to start by thanking my staff for all the hard work. Months and months, we start in January on the budget and it's, it's a, it's a process. And so I want to thank Mia and the rest of my staff for working on this to get it completed. And I think we even actually got it a little bit earlier than we normally have in the past. So just the introduction, it's a legal requirement to get this adopted before, on or before July 1st. Just to remind you that these are using assumptions that came from the May revise from the governor. So things could change. We're hoping, usually, you know, the legislative constitution deadline is June 15th, but the state is required to have their budget adopted by June 30. This is our budget cycle, so we're starting up here at the top again with our adopted budget. These are our different interims and reporting periods. If we do have a significant change from when we adopt our budget to when the state gets adopted, then we will come in August and do what we call a 45-day revise. In September, we will bring back the unaudited actuals, which is closing the year that we're ending now as of June 30. And then December and March are interims for the current year. Again, a budget is a financial plan that reflects proposed expenses. It is just a budget and it will change. This is our first take at how we think we're going to, how we think our year's going to play out with all of our expenditures and our anticipated revenues. We operate several different funds. All districts in California have all funds. This report primarily is going over what we call the general fund. It's Fund 01. It's comprised of restricted and unrestricted. But here you have a list of all the other funds that we operate within the district. And this slide here kind of gives you a brief description on the purpose of each fund. So the 2425 proposed budget, overall, our revenues are budgeted at just under $350 million. Our expenditures are right about $302, almost $303 million. And so our difference is $46 million. To remind you, for the local control funding formula, how it's calculated for the revenue, we have a base grant that the COLA gets applied, the Statute of Tyler COLA, for this budget. Right now, it's not obviously set yet until the state adopts it, but our COLA was 1.07. It's a significant lower, significantly lower than what we've had in the last two years. And that gets applied to the base grant. We have grade spans adjustment as part of the LCFF for TK through 3 and grades 9 through 12. So we get a little bit of extra for the grades, for those grade spans. And then we apply our unduplicated counts to the supplemental and concentration. So again, the LCFF revenue is based on base grant for every student. And then we have supplemental and concentration that's based on students of high needs, English learners, foster youth, and homeless. Our unduplicated count for this budget at this time is 77.27%. And that's a three-year average. So when we calculate the LCFF and the unduplicated count, it's a three-year average for the formula. I believe our unduplicated count for the year that we're ending now was closer to 79, a little over 79%. But the three-year average used for this calculation is 77.27. So our base funding for LCFF at this point is $157 million. Our supplemental and concentration is almost at 48, just under 48 million. And so this is our total LCFF revenue. And that's our largest pot of unrestricted general fund revenue. This is just showing our enrollment over the last 10 years and our actual ADA. You can see that our enrollment has decreased, but it's, has not decreased as, as much, which is good, over the last few years. And our ADA took a decline due to COVID. And, but that is sort of flattening out as well. I think we're, we're coming up from the, you know, high 80s now, where we're reaching a little bit over 90%. So this slide shows the enrollment. That means how many kids are actually enrolled in our district. And then the orange bar is the actual ADA. So that is for the amount of kids that are actually enrolled, how often are they actually coming to school? And then the gray bar is the funded ADA, which is the number that we use to calculate our revenue. And that happened during COVID, where we are now allowed to use the three-year prior average, which has helped us generate more revenue, because our three-year prior average has been larger than our actual ADA. These are our budget, our revenue sources that are budgeted in the general fund. The LCFF revenue is comprised of our state aid, our property taxes, and our Education Protection Act, our EPA account. That's our unrestricted piece. The other four boxes, as you go over to the right, just kind of gives you an idea of what our restricted revenues are and the different types of money that we get that are restricted. And you will see on here that we have a lot of one-time money from the state that will be ending. And you'll see that in just another slide or two. So this slide shows estimated actuals. That's ending as of June 30, so how do we think we're ending the year? So the fiscal year ends June 30, but we actually work on processing everything for that year and getting our final numbers all the way up into almost the end of August. And then in September, we'll give you the actual, well, the estimated actuals. And then the actuals will be after it's audited. So the very first column here is the estimated actual. So this is how we plan to end the year. And then we have our budget for 2425, so that starts July 1st. And the very last column, you can see the difference. So what's changing based on how we're ending the year and how this year went versus how we think next year is going to happen? You can see we have a significant decrease in revenue. And so the LCFF revenue, like I talked about, between the COLA being only 1.07 and our declining enrollment, so we have not a very large increase in the, in the ADA, we're decreasing our LCFF revenue over prior year of just under $3 million. Our federal and state revenues are Our federal and state revenues are declining or decreasing, and that's primarily due to the one-time money. We have ESAR going away. We had learning recovery and, um, the art and music block grants that are our that are all booked in the current year, but we're spending them in the out years, but the actual revenue came in in the current year. So you we had to book them, but we're we won't see them in the revenue line item light items, but we'll see them in expenditures because we'll be spending down the ending fund balances from those. We had a CalShape HVAC grant that was in our local revenue, our COPPS grant that we received this year that we're spending both part this year and part next year, and school behavioral health. So we have a decrease in revenue of 48, a little over 48 million. Our expenditures, some are increasing and some are decreasing. So we have some savings that we're budgeting on we're on having unfilled positions. So over the course of the last couple of years since I've started here, we, um, we continue to have unfilled positions that are falling to the ending fund balance. So I'm trying to anticipate that and sort of get a better budget number for salaries and expenses. So we did budget some unfilled positions. We have increases to our health benefits. So as you remember, we have a two-year agreement with our employee groups on our health benefits. And so the increase to that is in our employee benefits. We also were able to budget a decrease, a small decrease of about 600,000 to our workers' comp. So our workers' comp rate, even though our salaries went up, our workers' comp rate went down slightly, and that's due to our JPA, which is our joint powers authority that we're involved in, decided to buy down the rate so the districts could have a savings overall for all of the for all of the districts. And so our workers' comp rate did decrease slightly. So we will have a little savings in that. We have supplies and services. We have a lot of the one-time money that we spent in the current year for technology. We had one time, we had several laptops that we purchased this year that we won't be purchasing next year. We've done a ton of cable cabling work for our technology and just building our infrastructure and the network to try and improve it and get more secure. We talked about the HVAC Cal grant that we booked in the revenue. We also spent that and we that was part of the capital improvements. So we won't be spending that next year. We had a Kinship Infrastructure Grant that we were using the money for to improve our Deer Valley Cafeteria. So that's part of the change from one year to the next. Our capital outlay, again, it was technology. A lot of the infrastructure upgrades were in that category along with HVAC replacements. Um, we also had got our large HVAC projects that we're working on, both at the Deer Valley and the Antioch Gym, and we had those approved through ESAR. ESAR funds have to be spent by September and the projects are not going to be done. So we're putting some of that money into deferred maintenance so that we could complete those projects and use that money. That's where you'll see the transfers in and out. Whoopsies, sorry. Uh, the transfers in and out, um, right here for the deferred maintenance. So our estimated actuals, we're expecting to end it with just under 80 million as our ending fund balance, and we'll go over the components in just a minute. And for our budget year, we're estimated to spend it down to 46 million. So this is what I just talked about. It kind of gives you a little description of all the changes that are by category, all the revenue categories and all the expenditure categories. So the general fund, as I mentioned earlier, is comprised of restricted and unrestricted. So this slide shows you for the budget year, the 2425 budget year that will start on July 1st, what's the breakout between the unrestricted and the restricted? So the unrestricted, the largest part of our budget is the LCFF revenue source here, and you could see that. The restricted LCFF source is our special amount. Um, you could see the amounts that spend on salaries, benefits and all the other expenditures for the unrestricted versus the restricted. We are deficit spending on both sides, both the unrestricted and the restricted. We are deficit spending. Um, you could see the majority of the deficit is coming from the restricted side, and that is primarily due to, again, spending down the one-time money. So we booked the revenue in the year that we're ending June 30, and then we carried it over from our ending fund balance, and then we're spending it down. And so our ending fund balance is decreasing due to spending spending it down of the one-time money and not having the revenue actually received in that year. So this is the components of ending fund balance. So this explains what is the ending fund balance and what is what what are the components? What is it made up of? So on the left side, and I did put a piece of paper in your thing so that you could because I know the left side is a little hard to read. Um, so on the left side is the components of any fund balance for the estimated actuals. So when we close out 2324, we expect to have about 51 million of restricted money. And you could go down the line and see the categories. 20 million of that is learning recovery. So if you remember, the learning recovery plan was to spend it on positions that we previously were using ESAR money on. So we have money built in, half of it to be spent in the 2425, and then the remainder is going to be spent in 2526, and you'll see that in just a moment in the multi-year. Towards the bottom here, you have other assignments. These are assignments that we've talked about in the previous, uh, interims, and these are now budgeted in the current year. So we had E-rate expenditures that we needed to match. So we have a two-year plan. We have a $9 million E-rate approval that we got, but we do have to do matching for two years. And so we have that set aside. To go with our our COPPS grant, we have the security. So that's how we plan to end the year over here with these, um, assignments. When we look to the right side and we look at the 2425 budget, you can see that our ending fund balance reduces down to 46 million, and this is the components of it. So the the learning recovery is carrying over 9 million to the following year. Do we have any questions on that? This is a requirement by the state, and it's just showing that we are able to make our minimum reserves. So 46 million is what we're projecting to have as our ending fund balance. We're showing in this calculation right here what our 3% required reserve is, which is a little over 9 million. It's 3% of our total budgeted expenditures. So the remainder of the ending fund balance is 37 million, and this is how it's comprised of. So we have the ending fund balance of 46. We make sure that we have the 3% reserve, and then here's the components of the rest, and that was broken out on the previous slide. The 25 million is the legally restricted, and these are our other, um, assignments. You could see we put, um, uh, reserve here for our dental and our vision because we have a two-year and we're we're reserving it into the December of 25. One-time funding, again, this slide is should be familiar. Um, the red circles are the one-time fundings that are expiring. So those most of those are not included in the budget. If we don't spend them down by June 30, like we might have a little bit of ESAR money. So we'll have to make adjustments in the budget at the interim, um, but we have to spend it by June 30th. The blue circles are the ones that are that are still included in the budget at some amount, and you can see the expiration dates in the circles. So now we're moving on to the multi-year. So we just talked about how we think we're going to end the current year at June 30, what the projections are for the new budget year, starting July 1st. And now we're going into 2526 and 2627. So this slide is the revenue assumptions for all three years. We kind of already talked about 2425. Here's the LCFF calculations. Going forward to 2526, we're using a COLA of 2.93, and we're using a funded ADA of 13,570. So it's a little bit of a decrease from prior year in the ADA, but the COLA is increasing. So we do have a slight increase to our LCFF at this point. The same for 2627. We have a COLA of 3.08. We do have a decrease in the funded ADA because our enrollment continues to be projected to decrease. So we decrease our ADA slightly, um, but but it still yields us a little bit of a positive increase to revenue for those two years. We have the one-time money that's being spent, so it's going down to zero. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And now we're moving on to the expenditure assumptions for the multi-year. We have our CalSTRS and PERS rates. CalSTRS has been the same and does not, I don't expect it to go up. CalPERS still is estimated to increase, so we've included that in our multi-year. We are budgeting a decrease of about 10 FTE, and that is based on the amount of decline in enrollment. So if we if we estimate that we have a decrease in enrollment, we will expect to have a decrease in the amount of certificated staff that we need. Um, we budgeted some savings from unfilled positions, and I want to draw your attention to this line, the next couple of lines here, where in order to balance the budget, I am suggesting that we need to do a reduction. Nothing's been identified, so that's something that we'll have to work over the next six months on a reduction of expenditures for a 4 million in 2526 and 1.2 million of 26 in 2627. So given the COLAs and our estimated ADAs, those are my projections at this time to balance the budget. Um, we also anticipate in 2526 that we would have about 1.75 million in reductions of one-time things that we've that we were paying for in the current year. Like there's some technology or some HVAC stuff that we won't buy next year. So those adjustments have been made. And lastly, we have been contributing to our deferred maintenance fund to help with the HVAC replacements. I anticipate that we'll issue the bonds in 2425, so we will not need to contribute to deferred maintenance in 2526. So that's a savings to the general fund. So when we look at all the revenue and the expenditure assumptions that we just talked about, this is how it all plays out. Our revenue is pretty much flat. Our expenditures are decreasing because we built in some savings and some reductions that we'll have to make. And then you could see our ending fund balance does decline because we we are spending down our ending fund balance. We are deficit spending all three years, um, and it's positive that the deficit is decreasing, but we'll have to keep an eye on that because you can't continue to deficit spend because at some point you're going to spend more than you have and your ending fund balance will go to negative. So that's something as we make reductions, my, like I said, my what I expect to reduce is these numbers here to balance. Those numbers can change based on if things change, based on our spending patterns, best based on our savings patterns, based on if we get different projections for revenues. This is our projections for the components of the ending fund balance. So we talked about the 2425 and the components on the previous slide. The middle the middle column is 2526. So you can see how our our restricted ending fund balance is decreasing because we're spending it over the next couple of years. Um, our home to our home-to-school transportation is our largest piece of the unrestricted, and we are able to make our 3% economic uncertainty for all three years. So these are our ongoing challenges, these among other things, but these are the things that are primarily affecting the budget. You know, we have COLA instabilities, we have inflation, staffing challenges, uh, expiring of a lot of one-time, uh, funding. And this district has been fortunate enough to have a very large amount of one-time funding over the last three or four years, and it's pretty much depleted. And so that's going to be an issue with us trying to keep up with the program. This is just sort of the Prop 98 and the, um, maneuvers that they're talking about. So at this point, the, um, they have not come to an agreement on any of the the budget. But I what I will say is there's a lot of interesting, um, strategies going on for the state to trying to to balance their budget. And one of the strategies that they're proposing is to push out what they over. So in 2223, they they estimated their revenues too high and they funded to us. So now we're having they're trying to figure out how we're going to pay back from 2223. And one one of the strategies is to push it out to 2526 and start us having to repay them. So there's a lot of interesting things happening, and so, um, we will wait to see how that unfolds, but they have three days to come up with something and we'll see what that hap how that happens. But it is they're calling it a maneuver, um, but there's 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 five or six different options that they're looking at. One of them could be deferrals. Back if you all remember back in 0809, they did deferrals when that what that means is that they don't pay the districts the cash. Part of our state, part of our LCFF is state aid, and so they defer it. And so districts have to go out and either, um, take loans to have cash so that we can make our payroll, or we if unless we have a large ending fund balance where we have cash that we can offset it. So we'll we'll talk more about that in the next couple of months. So I just talked about what we call the general fund, which is our largest operating fund. These are our other funds in the district, um, that we manage and we budget, and we have our adult ed fund, our trial nutrition fund. You know, I'd like to again, give her a little shout out because she, Stephanie Simery, runs a really, really, really good program. She feeds a lot of students. I mean, she worked really hard at getting our unduplicated count up. And she has always tries to find resources to improve the the spaces for our students. So kudos to her. Our deferred maintenance, um, if we sell the bonds, when we sell the bonds, we'll be depositing it into Fund 21, so that we'll be watching that one closely. Fund 25 is our developer fees. That will help with our bond program because that could go for our growth sites. So measure B, um, we will be bringing some presentations to the next few board meetings to so the next board meeting will have a resolution before you to notify the county treasurer that we plan to sell bonds this year so that they could put it on the tax rolls. Doesn't mean that we have to sell bonds, but anticipation that we will sell bonds in this fiscal year. So that will be coming for you to try and get prepared for that. This is a just a summary of some of the projects that we have talked about and that came back in some of the surveys that we did. And John Muir TKK classroom, um, has been a priority just due to, um, the capacity and the growth in the TK program where we're we don't have enough classrooms for that program. And so this will really help the district overall, specifically John Muir. So we'll have like a little, we'll have to overflow our TK program to this school site. But we're really growing in that area. And then Orchard Park is the other school site that is growing, um, in enrollment. And in addition to that, um, having to deal with five to six lunch periods currently. So those were the ones that we hope to start in fall of '24. I did meet with the architect to go over the timing of I did meet with the architect to go over the timing of how each project sort of estimate. It takes anywhere from two to four years from start to finish on the projects. And so we'll talk more about that, but this is just sort of a summary. So the first phase, I was estimating of about 75 million between the John Muir and the Orchard Park project and then paying for the planning phase of Phase II projects, and then a list of deferred maintenance. So if you remember, we have a long list of deferred maintenance projects that need to be done at every school site. And so I was trying to map that out with the architect and see realistically what could happen and how quickly can things get done. So our closing thoughts. So we're here at June 12th with our public hearing. It will be before you at the next board meeting for approval for the budget. So we'll submit it by June 30 to the county and then to the state. We're hoping that the governor will have something by June 30 as well. And like I said, if something changes with the governor's enacted budget, that significant change to the revenue, we do a 45-day revise in the August board meeting. The certification for all districts is either positive, qualified, or negative. And I'm happy to report that we are positive. That means we are able to meet our financial obligations for the current and the subsequent two fiscal years. Just some closing thoughts. So we presented the balanced budget for '24, '25. We're able to make our 3% economic uncertainty reserve. The multi-year projection spends down large amounts of one-time revenue. It includes declining enrollment. It includes required budget reductions in the unrestricted general fund of 4 million for '25, '26, 1.3 for '26, '27, along with unfilled positions. We did a general fund reimbursement of the 2 million from Fund 21 for the bond HVAC expenditures that we have in the budget. We're a positive certification. And again, it will become before you on June 26. This is why doesn't ending fund balance increase at closing? And we'll talk about that more at the estimated or unaudited actuals. This is just information that you're approving the actual state forms that are in the packet, not the PowerPoint. And these are our deliverables. Back to the top. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Yeah, any questions? Trustee Lathan?
Thank you, Ms. Robbins, for the presentation. This question is for you, but it's probably also for the board. So first of all, thank you for making it clear and explaining the numbers and how we arrived today. And I'm very glad that we have a positive certification again. I'm thinking about the comp, you made a comment about the architecture. I don't know if you want to go back to that slide, Slide 30, but on the Phase I for the $75 million, the John Muir TKK classrooms, Orchard Park, new gymnasium, and cafeteria. Are those two different buildings or one building?
Two different.
Two different. And then planning for two middle schools and then deferred maintenance. I know we have, I think it's called a PLA. Is it PLA with the unions?
We don't have one currently.
We don't have one. We approved one though, right?
No.
We haven't gotten it yet.
The process of...
Got it. Okay. So my question was going to be how are the Building and Trades or the other unions that we were going to work with or we have talked about working with, you know, able to do work in these areas? But I didn't realize we were not there yet. Okay, right. That was my only question.
We'll get there.
Other questions? Vice President Rocha?
I'm fine.
Trustee Heck?
No questions.
Great. I think just the only question, more just a clarification because I think people hear like the term deficit spending and think that that's super scary. That's just that we're spending more than we're getting in revenues. And the reason we're doing that is because we have such a large ending fund balance, right? Great. So if we don't have any questions, then I'll open up the public hearing. Do you have any comments or anyone that wishes to speak? Otherwise, I will close the public hearing. And then this will come back to us at the next meeting to actually formally approve. Great. Moving on to nine public presentations. We have none. 10 consent items. Do we have any items that we need to discuss separately or pull for a separate vote? Yes, Trustee Lathan?
Thank you. 10K consent item, service agreement with Winifred Solis. I'm not sure who's over that one. Oh, probably Ms. Robbins. I think it's construction or something along that...
That's the Department of State Architect Inspector that we're required for our construction projects. And it's for the HVAC project at Antioch High.
Okay. So this was a similar question I had during, I think, the last meeting. But it says that we're going to pay them, I think it's eight months, like $10,000 a month. And then it says a monthly rate of $5,000 per month, excuse me, will be charged until the project is completed. And I'm wondering if that's standard language or if, for example, after eight months, we can bring it back to see what they have completed? Because I don't know how long it takes.
Well, I think that, so that's standard. And we're required to have them until closeout. So we can't close out a project without them. And so it's written that way because oftentimes, construction projects get delayed. So we can say that we want it to complete in eight months, but oftentimes, they may not get completed in eight months. So they structure it to where the bulk of the construction project is time-consuming on their part. And then if we're doing loose ends and doing punch list items, that they still have to come back and do it. That's why it's a reduced rate. And then they still have to complete all the paperwork for DSA.
One of my, so this is a state organization, you're saying?
So he's certified by Department of State Architect. So he doesn't work for the state, but we have to have a Department of State Architect certification individual to do this work.
Right. So what I'm asking then, is it reasonable to say we have an eight-month contract? And whatever is not done, we come back and then we extend the contract. Is that reasonable? And I'm asking because it could be drawn out to 15 months. Like how do you know, you know, like we should know like what's been done in those eight months versus saying, oh, if you're not done in eight months, you might need another five, but the board doesn't know. So I'm asking you, is that reasonable to request that we have an eight-month contract? Because that's what it says. And then if they need more time, we come back and you give us an update on what they have completed and then what they need to do further?
We can do whatever you like. That's not, I don't want to say it's not reasonable, it's not realistic. Because like I said, the project's already delayed again because we extended the bid process. So it's very common for them to have the contract to say what they think the duration of the construction is going to be and then to have it open-ended because sometimes if something goes wrong with a project, it could go on for two years.
And that's my concern, right? Especially if it's not coming back to us to say, hey, it's been longer than eight months and now we're going to have this extended contract. But we don't know what that is, how long. We can't tell the community because we have no idea. So it just feels like it would be more transparent and clear if there is a deadline and then we get an update on they're not finished and can we extend it for another eight months or something like that? To me, like as a contractor, I do contract work. Like I couldn't imagine just like, oh, it might be done in eight months, but it might be three years. That impacts our budget.
Right. But we have to have them, we have to have a contract with him.
Yes. No, I understand that. But what I'm asking is, could we say eight months? And then if they're not done, you come back and tell us what they did do? So accountability, what they did do and then how much more time they need to finish.
Right. So I think you'll get updates like with the construction because oftentimes, we'll give you updates with the construction. You'll see the POs and the payments to him on the board agenda. I think it might be more reasonable to do it more like 12 months instead of eight months and then review it.
Okay. So maybe we vote separately when that's the time. Or maybe not. You all might say, no, we're okay with the current way it's written where it's open and it could take 10 years. Anybody else want to contribute?
10 years is not realistic.
Yes, yes. I'm being facetious.
It's not very likely.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess my question, follow-up to make sure I understand here. Right, this is a DSA inspector. So they're not actually doing like the physical work. They're there as part of the process. So they have like no actual impact on trying to, I guess, extend out to the project such that like we're paying out people, right, for delaying the projects? I imagine that's the concern there, that projects get delayed out. And then we still have, you know, language within this contract again for that 30-day termination there if for whatever reason, we felt that that was a concern there, so.
But how will we know if we don't get in? I hear what you're saying, and how will we know? So what do they do then? Maybe I should ask that.
They inspect every phase of the project. So they're inspecting if we have the right screws. So they're basically, we'll be working on behalf of, it's a requirement by the state, but they're working on behalf of the district to make sure that the contractor is doing it correctly within the DSA specs.
Okay, that's what I understood.
So it's kind of, you can maybe think of it as like an auditor. Where they're like making sure that everything's done correctly within what the Department of State Architects should be and what our architect has, says with the drawings. So they're basically our auditor for construction.
That makes sense. All right. I would feel more comfortable if there was a, if we at least get updates on where they are. And I understand what you're saying. So it's not just depending on what they're doing, but it's depending on what the construction people are doing. Okay. The next one, 10L, certificated human resources. Of course, you know, we got seven teachers that are resigning at the end of the school year or certificated staff. And then for 10M, we have three staff that are resigning. Not good timing. 10O, out-of-state field trip. This is probably Missy Barra. This sounds like a great opportunity. It's for a trip for our students to go to New Orleans, Louisiana, and staff on behalf of the Antioch High School for '24, '25. And it sounds like an amazing opportunity. They're going to be learning jazz or something around music. Yes, studying jazz. Is this the first time they're going or is it a tradition?
I think it's the first time.
I don't, yeah, in my time here, I don't believe that they've gone before.
They're raising their own money.
Okay. And they are raising money for that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say, it sounds like an amazing opportunity for our young people. 10R, service agreement with extended learning for educational resource. Can you talk more about what ERC, talk more about the services of ERC and how it is connected to the after-school programming? Like I think we have, there is an after-school program that works with most of our schools. So what does ERC do specifically?
So they monitor all of the attendance pieces for all of the grant-funded services. So all assets, ACES, ELOP. We have to submit reports regularly based on attendance. That's how we continue funding and that's the service they provide.
All right, perfect. So they do all kind of the paperwork, back stuff and monitoring and account. Okay, thank you. That's it for me for consent items.
Any other items to discuss?
I just wanted to call attention to P, which is Always Dream. And I can't think of her name, but it's a stick dating star. Thank you very much because that name, I can't even pronounce it. I met her at Misha when she was there. And I'm just excited about her program. And it's come to two schools that are in need. And it's involving involvement with parents. So that's the engagement piece, which is very good for the two schools. I'm looking forward to the new year. I'm sorry we missed it at Marsh because I think they couldn't afford to continue it. But the other two schools have picked it up. Because it was at Marsh originally. I just wanted to call attention to it.
Any other items? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I move approval from A to, what is it? What's my last name?
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Items A through X. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes.
I would like to call attention to Dana, Dana Gaspard. Congratulations, as she's coming in as the new principal for Marsh. She's the VP now. And now she's moving up. That's the great I think about our system is that we allow our VPs to keep moving up. And that's a good challenge. Thank you.
Moving on to 11 action items. A, the 2024, 2025 school plans for student achievement.
All right. So attached, we have all of our school plans for student achievement. So I want to thank all of our school sites because they had to rewrite essentially the school plans based on the new goals in our LCAP, which they have done. And they've been approved by their school site councils. And so they're here before you this evening for approval based on making sure that the categorical funds are being used for supplemental and not supplanting. And they've already been reviewed by our Ed Services staff.
Great. Any questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the plans as presented.
I move approval.
Second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the school plans for student achievement as presented. I'll just double-check one more time, any discussion? Great. Otherwise, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to 11B, physical therapist classified job description.
Good evening, board. So the physical therapist job description that you have in front of you was prepared by our Personnel Commission. This is a new district classification that you would be approving. Currently, we do have students needing physical therapy services. However, these students are currently being served by outside agencies and contractors. So the district desires to bring this job description forward for your approval tonight so that we can have our own employees serving in this capacity, not only to serve our students as part of our district employee group, but also to mitigate some of the costs of those outside contractors. And if approved, obviously, the Personnel Commission would set the salary range and the job requirements for the position.
Great. Any questions from my colleagues? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the job description as presented.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the physical therapist job description as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to 12, items for information, discussion, and action by board. We have one item, A, exit interviews. And I'll turn over to Trustee Lathan.
So the last board meeting, we discussed, my 22nd board meeting, we discussed me going back and doing a scope of work about for, to hire an outside firm or consultant to do comprehensive exit interviews for our district. And this is in light of the number of resignations we have, transfers for people between school sites and/or retirements that may or may not be, you know, that those folks may have stayed. And again, this is to be something that's positive so we can learn why people are resigning so that we can do, we can make the changes we need in our system if it's something that's causing people stress or they don't feel like they belong or whatever it is. So this is really a learning opportunity for us, kind of like our equity audits. And so I put together a scope of work. It is in...
It is in, I, I'm not sure if you guys are logged on, but, um, the scope of work is in the agenda. And, um, the proposal would be for me, if you all, first of all, do you have questions about the scope of work?
So I guess just to click.
Under, um. I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
A.
I'm just trying to find, oh, here it is, here it is, okay, there, I can look at it, I'm sorry, I just.
Yeah, so I guess just to clarify, the scope of work is the scope of work that, um, uh, whatever firm it is that we end up deciding to go with.
Yes, yes, thank you for clarifying. Yep, so this would be something folks would be able to look at and say, okay, this is something that we can do or, or not do. And so it's basically, um, thinking about folks who, who have resigned, transferred to school sites, or retired within the last 12 months. They would go and, uh, see who would be interested in an interview and interview them. They would come up with the questions, some of which we have on, um, they could possibly use those or refine them. Um, and they would determine the exact number of, um, folks that they would interview. I'm thinking the project duration would go between whenever we approve the, if we approve the, the project through, say, November, to give people enough time. Um, and so I just have a, I laid it out.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I, I understood that there was going to be questions that you were going to be given. I thought it was going to our, our own people to go through a process with the questions that you had arrived to, and then find out how that, the answers were coming out, and if we didn't, uh, ca, care for what was going on, that maybe we would explore. I think we, you're trying to go into a, an agency or a different group?
So we have two things going, the district has a, um, a, a form that folks can fill out, um, when they leave our district. Um, and it asks, I'm not even sure all the questions that it asks, um, but there, it's a list of questions. Um, what I learned is that it takes time. Um, and so if we want folks to have, for example, a one-on-one interview, that would take time from, from our staff. And so hence, having an outside organization do it would be helpful. But in addition to that, sometimes folks might not want to talk to our staff right now. And so how can we get someone that's a neutral body, that will be objective, and learn about why folks are leaving, and share that information with the school district, um, and that, and with the board, so that we can strategize in terms of how to reduce the number of folks who are resigning and leaving. And I say this because during, you know, anytime we negotiate, not just our district, but any, most districts, when you're in negotiation with the different bargaining firms or bargaining units, you know, the conversation is, we need to increase the pay so the teachers will stay. Well, we have the highest, uh, and, you know, highest, um, wages in our county in terms of teacher pay, and probably classified too, if not, it's probably really high up there. So people aren't leaving because of money, because we have increased, um, benefits are mostly paid for. Um, and so why are people leaving and not staying? Um, and that's where I'm trying to get to, so that we can, if we want to be a high-performing district, that means we need to be a high-performing district for our staff too.
It would be, oh, I'm sorry. It would be of interest to me if these are more retirements, or if these people have been here maybe five years and then they leave, or seven years and they leave. You know, I, I'm trying to figure out, uh, how do we measure that part? I, I really thought you were going to put in some questions for our people to follow up. And then we would review that and see if that was coming back the way we wanted to hear. And then we would explore it and outside, maybe look for an outside group.
No, I, no, why would I, I wouldn't do that, that's not, no, I wouldn't do that. And I don't, for me, it, just as an educator, it wouldn't matter to me if the person was here a year or five years. Uh, we want high-quality folks who have the skills, high-quality folks, excuse me, to stay. And if they're not staying, why? And so, um, no, the goal was not for me to create, create questions. We actually did that the first round, so the questions that HR uses now, I'd imagine some of them might include the questions that I asked them to revise, because it was shared with me. But this is something different, this is more comprehensive to add to the data that they're collecting. Excuse me, it's the air conditioner.
So I guess let me.
Could I add a little bit of information? Because again, the idea of exit interviews has been discussed, uh, several different meetings. Uh, what the Human Resources Department did do was initiate an exit survey that we had never had done before in the district. We had also created an entrance survey for new employees, based under what the Board President, I believe you had that idea. And so we've initiated those systems now to gather data about all of our folks who are leaving this year. What, one of the anticipated conversations that we were planning on doing was at the June 26th meeting, uh, to bring, in essence, data regarding our populace of employees. Data which would include the ethno, ethnicity of our employees, the duration of time of our employees within the district. We do capture reasons for departure on the resignations already. That's a data set that we have as well, that talks about people retiring or different sets. And we are in the process of gathering this initial survey data, based under the revised survey that we've sent out. Uh, so what we could do, if we were, we were still planning to do this at the June 26th meeting, would be to present, in essence, the data that we have gathered thus far on, of course, people leaving from various sources, yeah, again, in a compilation, right? Because we have, when you collect survey data, a lot of people believe this, a lot of people believe this, there are unique stories, of course. And we have offered, uh, to individuals through that process, uh, if they'd like to have individual meetings, that we're looking to schedule those meetings, again, as best we can, yes, uh, through the summer, a, as we get that data. But right now, we have re-sent out the emails to all of our people, and we've, are continuing to get responses back in. It does take a little bit of time for people to sit down and say, I'd like to give some feedback. Uh, some people will choose not to, uh, as, when we even invite them, if we were to go a different way to informal me, or to formal meetings, they may choose not to come. But those that come, again, we're seeing data, and so that's something we, we're planning to do, to bring you back some data at the June 26th meeting in a presentation process. Uh, so at least you'd have more information, uh, which may help the board, uh, to define your questions, if you choose to go that way, or do another thing that might be helpful to you, just to give you that information.
So I guess to, to summarize, and please correct me if I'm saying this wrong, but just to make sure that we get in a position to move through this item. So we have the survey that's happening, uh, that we're going to get results on, on the 26th, that's a discussion that we're going to have. And then before us here is this additional, uh, project to look deeper into, uh, and do more focused interviews with, uh, exit interviews with people that have left our school district, um, so that we can get even deeper insights into that. What's presented here is what that might look like. Um, and then what would be coming back to us would be the actual contract with the firms to actually then implement what this exit interview, uh, more deeper dive process, uh, would look like. So what we have today to decide is just, um, consensus that this looks generally what we're imagining and intentioning, and, uh, but we're not fully committing to, uh, having approved a contract yet with a firm that's going to come in the future. So, uh, what, what, uh, Trustee Lathan prepared here is just, what is this going to look like?
Correct, thank you for summarizing.
Yeah, so I think all we need is just whether there's consensus that, uh, we can move forward to bring some firms, and then that's where we kind of make the, the more deliberate decision.
I would think, in my mind, I, I don't know what, you know, what you are going to present to us from the district personnel. I would think that would be the initial step before we make a decision yea or nay. By, on the next meeting, whatever information you're going to share with us may change our dis, direction in our own minds, or where we want to go. And that's only a few weeks down the road.
Yeah, and so, so those are right, two separate processes that don't have to go in a linear fashion. Um, so we can both still look at that data and say, let's keep moving forward with this. And if later we decide that that doesn't make sense, or once we have those firms in front of us, we can decide further then, but there's really no reason to delay either of those.
I agree.
Okay, so I, I'm kind of in agreement with, I'd like to hear what the district has to say first, and then I will just consider going further in looking at other organizations.
So I'll say it again, that these are things that don't have to go in a, in a linear order. We can both hear this information and still keep moving forward with this. This is not even a final decision on, um, how we'll go about this necessarily. That still will have to be a contract that's kind of, uh, brought before this. So there's really no, no harm, it, it's kind of just more robust information and more, uh, robust sets of options before us. And I apologize if I'm speaking a little bit too.
No, that's very clear, um, you have summarized it very well. It's really about additional qualitative data, and again, I'm very, my leadership stance is this is not about, and I got you. I was so proud of student, of, um, Ed Services, because when it came to the equity audits, they jumped right in. And they were like, we're going to do it, we want to be better. We want more information about what we're doing well and where we can be challenged. And this is the exact same thing, but focused on human resources. And it's really not focused on human resource, you all just get the information, but it's really about culture and climate across the district. You all, as human resources, are just the folks who kind of get it, right? You get the resignations, you get the complaints, you get the, whatever it is. So this isn't about you necessarily, as much as it is district culture and climate. If we work on education in one of the high-performing districts, and this is focused on academics only, and teachers and all of that, that's, that's not, that's one part of our system. The bigger picture, one of the bigger pictures is, is how are people feeling in our district? Why are they coming? Why do they leave? What is the sense of belonging here? That information can be captured in exit interviews, things that folks won't tell you. And I'm telling you, there are things, I've left districts before, and I wouldn't have told my bosses why, because I don't want to be, you know, bamboozled, so I, to get a job somewhere else. You just don't, you just, sometimes you just leave quietly, right? Um, and I, I really think we need to be open and hear what folks have to say. And this is not anything negative as much as it is, what is the data telling us? I love data, that's how you get better, you need, you need, you need information, qualitative and quantitative. And so that's why I'm doing this. And, excuse me, I've gotten several requests from staff to meet. And I'm like, go to HR, and they're like, no. Go to your principal, no. Right, so I'm a board member. There's only so much I can do, unfortunately, we are the supervisor of the superintendent. Why is that? What do, what, what is it? No, we need to know, you all need to know, not just the board, the district does. So I'm going to continue to advocate for it. And I will, I do want to know from the folks who are not, the board members who are not certain, or you're opposed to it, why? What is, what, what is the reason why you wouldn't want it?
I'm not opposed to it. I mean, you brought the audit, and I thought that was a great idea. I'm not opposed to this, what I want to do is hear what they have to say at the next meeting, and then reconsider.
Yeah, so, so that's exactly, I think, exactly what, what's proposed here, is that we listen still what's happening at the next meeting, and this is continues forward as well, um, to hear whether this is something we want to do once we actually have the firms, um, and the contract before us. So this is just, um, really more, more information at the end of the day.
But I understand this, to be looking for some people for a possible contract.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, I'd rather hear what it has to say, than make my decision if that's the route that I want to take.
I guess I'm wondering, what is the harm in looking for people and then making the decision?
Because it might be what I hear, I don't need those people.
But why don't we just make that decision once we have those options before us? It, it's kind of limiting our sets of options, um, if we don't kind of.
It's just a timing, it's just a timing issue, that's all. I mean, it's just a matter of the next meeting.
This, this has no impact to the way that this would like proceed or move forward. Um, again, the, the real decision comes once we have those contracts before us, that's when things start taking up more resources and things like that.
I, I, you know, I, I am open to both possibilities. However, we have two weeks left in this school year, basically. And, uh, if we can get that information by the next board meeting, from what we already hear, that might be enough sufficient. If it's not, we can still access the next plan. Two weeks is not going to destroy the plan. All I'm saying is, let's go to Plan A first, which is here what the district has found. And then we can see if that makes sense, and we want to go further, or we're okay with this. So it is, and we have, uh, four people here, Clyde's not here, he would be here for that next meeting. So I think it's just, two weeks is not a ruin.
I'm not sure how much I can explain this, again, that there's absolutely no impact to this process, and that this honestly just seems kind of obstructive for obstructive sake. But if we want to move forward, here's what I propose, that maybe is something that people can understand, um, is let's bring this discussion back at the next meeting. Is that okay with you, Trustee Lathan?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, okay, and, and we have good consensus on that.
And in between time, several staff members who have resigned have reached out to me. I will be meeting with them, and if we decide we're not willing to hear what folks say, I'll just share at the board meeting how folks are feeling and why they're leaving. I don't want to do that, because I'd rather not do that. I'd rather have an outside firm do it professionally and have a process, and we have that kind of data. But I will not sit back and allow people to leave who feel like they've been harmed, and we decide not to listen to them. That is not okay.
Great, so we will continue this discussion at the June 26th meeting. Moving on to 13, resolutions for first reading, we have none. Uh, 14, resolutions for immediate action. Uh, A, resolution 20232450, specifications of election order. I'm not sure who can give us kind of just a quick summary on this.
Yes, this is the, this is the resolution calling for the 23.
14.
Or, excuse me, for the next school year, uh, ah, I jumped to the next one. For the resolution calling for advising the, uh, Board of Election regarding the process that we'll use for elections for the replacement board seats, should we have replacement board seats available. So we have to go through this process of notifying them by resolution 123 days prior to the date set for the election.
Great, any questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, the resolution.
I move approval.
Great, so it's been moved, uh, to approve resolution on specifications of election order, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve resolution 20232450, specifications of election order. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to 14B, uh, resolution 20232451, authorizing provisional internship permit.
And Board President Hernandez, I was remiss in not, uh, introducing Carrie Wells, our Senior Director of Human Resources. This is Carrie's first actual board meeting with us today, but we wanted to have her come and present these items.
Yes, welcome, and I apologize for also not taking the time to recognize that.
That's okay, I'm happy to be here, thank you, uh, President Hernandez and Dr. Martinez. So, um, the resolution you have before you here is, um, requesting approval for certificated individuals that are listed in your information to work under a provisional internship permit, or what we like to call a PIP, for the 24, 25 school year. Um, as you're aware, this is something that comes to you, um, each school year, and this type of teaching permit is granted through the California Teaching Commission, and it's most commonly used while, um, certificated employees are working toward internship eligibility in a teaching program.
Great, thank you so much. Unless there's any questions, I will entertain a motion, uh, to approve this resolution.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt resolution 20232451, authorizing provisional internship permit. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say no, and the motion passes. Uh, 14C, resolution 20232452, authorizing instructors to teach outside of credential authorization for the 2024, 25 school year. So I'll turn it back over to Ms. Wells.
Yes, so this is another request that comes to you, um, each school year, and it allows the board to approve authorization for credentialed teachers to teach outside their subjects or classes. or classes outside of their general credential authorization under relevant ed code. As you know, or I hope you know, Human Resources works very diligently to align teachers to their credentialed areas, but sometimes courses do not have an applicable credential, such as a course like Leadership, or Avid, or our college and career course. Therefore, ed code allows the approval of this subject area outside of a specific authorized credential for a teacher.
Great, unless there's any questions, I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
And move approval.
Second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the resolution authorizing instructors to teach outside of credential authorization for the 202425 school year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to 15 resolutions for second reading and action, we have none. 16 board policies for first reading, there are none. And 17 board policies for second reading and action. We have A, new board policy, 4119.24, 4219.24, and 4319.24, maintaining appropriate adult student interactions.
Yes, so this is an optional board policy brought forward by Dr. Lathan, which was reviewed once by you already and is being brought back this evening for board action. The policy provides additional reinforcement regarding expected employee conduct when working with students and is aligned with all of our current board policies. If the Board chooses to adopt this policy, obviously it would apply to all classified, certificated, and administrative employees in our district.
Great, so unless there's any questions, this is the second time it's coming to us, I will entertain a motion to approve the policies as presented.
I have a comment.
Yes, Trustee Lathan.
So 17A. One thing I want to do is, I'm so sorry, is thank the, there was a staff member who sent me the language, which was so nice, from a different district, which was, made it easier. So thanks to that person. Also, I did, when I walked classrooms, I made comments to several principals because I noticed that there were several teachers or staff, not just teachers, but just staff in classrooms with students alone with doors closed. And I know I've worked in other districts, like a lot of larger districts have policies that that's a no-no, to protect the student and the staff member. Typically, you would leave the door open or, you know, have another, multiple students in the room. So that was a concern that I brought up to a couple of principals I noticed. But I do want to say, I have questions about two. One is, I'm hoping you all will be okay with striking number eight, if, when you look on there. Eight is on the second page, I believe. But it's addressing a student in an overly familiar manner, such as using, such as by using a term of endearment. A lot of our staff do, and not just here, but in a lot of places, as long as it's appropriate. But I know teachers will say honey, or sweetheart, or miho, or mija. And I just don't want folks to feel like they can't, and sometimes the kids like that. And so as long as it's not inappropriate, I prefer to strike that one. And then if we ever have issues, bring it back and have that conversation. But I would like that one strike, struck out. I don't know how you all feel about that.
Thank you on that one, because it is an important one. It's natural sometimes for us to say mija, miho.
So I just want to make, see if we can strike that one, and it sounds like we're in consensus. You're the one who's, huh? You're the president. But then also number five, creating or participating in social networking sites. I don't, for communication with students other than those created by the district without the prior written approval of the principal or designee. And I wanted to know, will this hinder teacher creativity and what could be the unintended consequences of that? I don't know what other media platforms, this is probably for Ms. Ibarra, but I don't know what other media platforms the certificated staff use with students. But I didn't want it to be something that limits them if that would not be helpful.
I'm wondering, because I'm not really clear, if this would apply to the feature that's in Thrill Share, where students can communicate with their teachers and vice versa. It could.
Yeah, our Thrill Share platform does have the option for teachers to send out messages to their students regarding homework, you know, but that is a district. But that is created, it's not created by the district, but it's housed within the district. So I think that would be okay. My concern would be, and I can't remember the platform that a lot of teachers use, but you can create your own classroom, and it's not Class Dojo that we use with parents, but you can create your own classroom and then teachers, it's a messaging system where you can message students, like, don't forget to bring your textbook tomorrow, you know, make sure you have.
There's a chat feature in Microsoft Teams.
Right.
In the classroom environment within Teams.
So I wonder if it would be helpful if we struck that one, if it's gonna hinder staff's ability to communicate professionally, of course, or, so I wanted to hear from the staff.
And I think number six might cover the main concern about social media, perhaps, because that tends to be more in a social outreach type setting.
And it does, it does narrow it in five, the other part of it is other than those created by the district without the prior written approval. So those are, I mean, those are district-sponsored platforms.
So I guess the question is, should we strike number five or not?
I think we could, I think we're okay with leaving it.
Okay. Is that what you're thinking, Carrie?
My only concern is, we just, I just feel that we would, we would have to work in tandem to be very diligent in having our principals message our teachers to help them understand that really to protect themselves, they should really only be using messaging systems that are provided within our district systems, rather than going to an outside app, which they're not intentionally meaning to harm, but the way five reads, they may be in jeopardy if they're using an outside app or platform that's not sponsored by.
I'm wondering if it could be adjusted to say only utilize
Yeah.
district apps, district platforms, and excluding the option of approval beyond the ones that the district supports.
I think that's her, I think that's her thought.
Yeah.
And mine too.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking when I was a teacher, were there platforms, yes, that I would use that the district might not use, but it's a new app that's cool, right? Could they then go to their principal and say, can I use this? Like, would that suffice?
I think I'm gonna jump into IT lane, too. I would think from a security and safety, that IT would want it within our systems because it can be monitored. When it's within what we support, then we're able to monitor. And I know that like Teams, for instance, it flags when inappropriate, whether it's student to student, teacher to student, it flags inappropriate behavior, and so that can be addressed and monitored.
So it sounds like we leave five, and I hear what you're saying, Carrie. She's like, yeah, we gotta monitor this, because it's about accountability, too, right? So when you find out, then you gotta do something about it, so sorry.
Yeah.
But, so let's leave five and strike out eight. Okay, is that okay?
Does that, is everybody okay with that on?
Yeah. Thank you.
Great, any other questions on this one? Great, so I'll go ahead, I think, to make this cleaner, I'll make the motion on this one to approve board policy 4119.24, 4219.24, 4319.24, maintaining appropriate adult student interactions with item eight within that document being removed and the following sections being renumbered as appropriate.
I move to approve.
So I made that motion, I'm looking for a second.
Oh, sorry, a second.
Great, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to 18 information items for general information, we have none. 19 future agenda items from board members. We'll start with Trustee Hack, any future agenda items?
Not in this moment, no.
Great, Trustee Lathan?
Yes. So this is future meetings or?
Agenda items. The comments come later. This is any agenda items.
Okay. I want to bring back up the independent educational evaluations, compare and contrast results. I think, and not on the, it doesn't need to be this one necessarily, but maybe August, September, to give the staff an opportunity to look at the difference between what are, so for families who are seeking outside evaluations for their kids who have IEPs or they want them to have IEPs, often, I wouldn't say often, I don't really know what the number is, but when we say no, they're seeking outside, and I want to know what that comparison is. Are those outside folks, is, are their results aligning with our recommendations?
I think too, yeah.
That data was presented in the Friday Board two weeks ago.
Okay, so I'll look at that.
Okay.
Thank you. And then also, it would be helpful to have regular updates on board committee meetings. We have several board committee meetings, and I'm curious about how those are going. So the Special Education Board Committee meeting, and that's for the board. And then there's a city school one, and I believe there's a third one. And then I can always give updates on the Equity Committee that we've had. That's it for me.
Vice President Rocha?
You know, there's a lot of talk, well, first of all, there's two things that are in my mind. The reclassification is very important. I don't know what our percentage is of children going through and being able to move on. I don't know how important that is for us to know, but I know there's an urgency to get them moving through the process, and I know we talk about it in our goals. I just, you can tell me on the Friday paper, I'm just trying to, you know. And the other one that, if interest is, we hear a lot about, well, our students are really not going on to college or a higher education. And when I was going to these graduations, I was amazed at all the students that were, had grants, I mean, I attended those that were getting money from different organizations and they were going on to school. So I just, I don't know how hard that is to find out, you know, how many of our students are really going forward.
Yeah, I think it's, we can gather some data about the students, because we would know where the transcripts are being sent and where the final.
Yeah, it's just curiosity.
We'll work with the director wisely on that for our graduating folks.
That's it.
Great, moving on to 20 additional comments which exceeded the first 30-minute session limit, we have none. 21 reports and comments from board members. We can start with Vice President Rocha.
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, since our last meeting, we had the memorial, which was very nicely done on the May 27th, and it's very nice to go and honor the veterans. But one of the things that came up, and I hadn't thought about it before, is our mayor did a great job in actually identifying the students that were going on into the service. And I thought, that is a thought we never really gave it a thought. I mean, I was in thinking, which is true, they are honored. Now, not all districts do it, or, excuse me, not all graduations do it. I know that at Antioch High School, when Louis was there, he would ask them to stand up, and then we would know who was going on. But I wonder if we shouldn't have some kind of attention to them, and since it was brought up by the city. And I know he made that mention at the memorial event, I just didn't know what date it was, and so I was sorry that I wasn't invited to go to see it. The second thing I wanted to put down is that when they had a great, at Antioch High School, I went to that one, and the banners they gave out, it was a good, large group, which means that they're being supported when they go on to the junior college. And then the 31st, I went to the ESL Attorney. It's interesting when you talk to parents and what they have to say, what's engagement, and I brought it up, just the idea that they needed the, what do you call it? The Standing Out There Information Board, whatever you want to call it. The marquee. And I understand from you that there's, many of our schools are going to be given that opportunity that they might not have right now because we haven't had the money for it, which I'm, that's great. I went to a talent short mission on the 31st, and the promotional programs and graduations, I was really, really happy to be able to have gone, and there was at least eight of them that I attended. The last one was my granddaughter's, and that was very special, and thank you for giving your comment. Thank you.
Trustee Lathan?
I went to two commencements or graduations within the last week. Deer Valley was a nice ceremony, and also Rocket Ship, our, the charter school that we support. And so those were nice. And just thinking about the ceremony for the city, I'm sure President Hernandez will talk more, he actually spoke, and everybody was invited, it was a citywide event. But it was absolutely beautiful, and it was all of our students who are going to the military. And it probably is about 20 students, I'm not sure, but they all had very specific areas. I learned a lot what branch of the military they were going into, and then even more specifically what they were gonna do. So if they were gonna work on technology in the Navy, on the ships, I mean, it was just absolutely amazing. And they were so proud, and their parents were so proud. And I had never been to a ceremony like that before, and so it was really nice to honor those students. And they'll be serving our country and keeping us safe, and I thought this is, should, I look forward to it being a tradition that we, that the city does. And hopefully, we can partner, you know, with them, as Trustee Rocha said, since they are our students. Mr. Willie Memes, his memorial celebration of life was a couple of weeks ago, maybe a week or two ago. Beautiful. It was so beautiful. We had many electeds coming to talk about his work over the years and advocacy. He was an educator, a teacher, it was just so beautiful. His family, of course, was there, and it was at a local church in Antioch, and so that was really nice. And just really gave me inspiration about continuing to do what's right for children, no matter what. And that's what he was about, and I know that that's what he would want me to continue to do. And so I wanted to honor him. Just to give the Board an update, the Equity Board Committee, we met, and I will bring goals at the next meeting, and I'll, Ms. Ibarra already weaved in a lot of the information nicely in the LCAP, so that would be a big part of it. Bond Oversight Committee, I met with or talked to Ms. Robbins. We will begin to actively recruit committee members in August. There are some folks I've talked to already, but the being active part, we'll really do that in August, so that's one. The Equity Audit, folks have asked me about it, and you can actually find a copy on the district website, if you go to Community, and then go to the dropdown Educational Equity and Excellence Audit Report, or you can go to the dropdown Board of Education and go to Educational Equity and Excellence Ad Hoc Committee and press on that to print out a copy or read a copy. The last thing I would say is, we had a staff member write a complaint against President Hernandez, and my concern is that, one, he's a board member and not an employee of the district, and we're using, or, or this is a question for Dr. Martinez, are we using the attorney group that was on that letter? This is from Ken Turner, she wrote a complaint against our board president. Are we using, paying for a district attorney to, for that information, for him, against a board member? Because he is not an employee.
So again, this is now, you're asking in public about a confidential matter that was raised for the situation. So when we decided to contract the district with legal representatives to conduct an independent investigation, that's what we've done at this point.
Against the elected?
Pardon me?
Against, I've never heard that before on my years of education, that a staff member would, we would, a district would pay for an attorney for a staff member to file, to complain against a board member.
Again, I've given you the information at this point, if we want to, not sure what else I could share in public at this point.
Okay. Well, I would hope we wouldn't, and especially if this is the same attorney group that did the investigation between employees, it feels like it would be quite a conflict of interest, and that doesn't make sense to me, and, and I wouldn't understand why the attorney group would actually want to do that either, if they've already done it between employees, why they would want to investigate a board member. So just, just know that that is, that's how I interpreted the letter, it could be, I could be wrong, and we can talk in private, or maybe not, if it's personnel issue, I'm just raising it, because I haven't heard that before. Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Trustee Hack?
Yeah, two things. I had the opportunity to go to Mission Elementary to celebrate their 50th year of existence, and I read all the, that sign that you guys all signed, I got to read that to them, and I just remember, because I first came to Sutter, or first came to Antioch as a young teacher, and teaching at Sutter, which is a brand-new school at that time, and Mission wasn't even finished yet. And I remember driving by Mission, because Sutter and Mission are fairly close, I'd drive by, and they're still building Mission, and all of a sudden, 50 years later, I'm giving them certificate, saying, wow, that was just a neat day, it really was. The other thing is graduations. Again, I talked, I've been in the district for a long time, 12 years I've been going to graduations. This year, I think, was the best one, best week. It spaced over two weeks, which is kind of nice, and a lot of them were during the day, not at night, and it was just, just, just very nice. Maybe I'm getting old, I have memories, but it just, I thoroughly enjoyed the graduations, absolutely. And the last one was Antioch High, so which, hey, CBI was the first one, which is the little tiny kids, and then the older ones. That's neat, neat two weeks, that's it.
And then we do have a public comment from Brian Atkinson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. Just kind of wanted to piggyback, I really wasn't going to get into this tonight, but two other members of the district received the same letter of complaint against, from Mr. Turnage, and we are being investigated by the lawyers. So I don't know about your side of things, but I wanted to make that clear, that two members got the letter of complaint from Mr. Turnage, and we are being investigated by the lawyers. I'll leave it at that.
Great, and so I'll start my public comments off then on, let's go with, yeah, the events that I've been through. So I did go to the Antioch Salutes Event, that honored and uplifted our students that have decided to join the military, it was a really great event. I got to speak at the event, and really the main message that I gave to these students is that Antioch is always their home, and that improving your community is part of making this country a better place as well, and that this is always a home for them. I also, yeah, went to the memorial service for Mr. Willie Mims, who has long been an advocate for changes to the status quo, and the only way to honor him is to continue that fight to change the status quo, and anything less than that is not really honoring his memory. And then I also went to a number of the graduations, I think I also hit about eight of them as well, and it's just, you know, it's one of the best experience of the school year, getting to really celebrate our students and celebrate such an important milestone, and that was, I think, the message I gave at, at a few of the graduations was to take a moment to celebrate, because I think these moments pass us by so quickly, and they become rare over time, our ability to celebrate the milestones that we have in life, and when we look back, really, those are the moments that, that matter most, is the time that we spent with family and friends, and the feelings that we, that we remember. I don't remember much of my graduation, but I remember that I spent it with family and friends, and that that was really great. Yeah, and then, then I'll also, the book for today that I want to uplift is by Cleo Wade, it's, it says, it's titled What the Road Said, and it's really a book, and I think the back actually summarizes it best, it says, "I said to the road, where do you lead? The road said, be a leader and find out." So it's about navigating these roads, these challenges, these different places, and seeing where they take us, seeing what they create, and what we become when we go through these different roads. I also was not necessarily going to address this, but I do think it is important, that, yeah, that, that, you know, in a, in a school district where we're facing challenges with the employment environment that we're getting, this, you know, these complaints are another example of the way that the system is designed to create exactly the environment that we have here, and is just a tactic of repressing and maintaining the status quo. When it comes to elected officials, we do our work in the public. I've been very, very public about what I've said, where I come from, so this is clearly a tactic to try to move conversations away from the public eye and into a private conversation of investigation. I welcome having this discussion out in the public, because that's how we do the work of public elected officials. I've said everything I have to say, and I will say it gladly again, so these tactics, again, are more examples of the way that we can continue and should continue to improve as a school district, because we can't be hiding the things where we're falling short, we need to bring those things out and forward. I'm someone that's very publicly stood on what I have to say, and that's what it, that's where we should be when it comes to our elected officials, out in the public, out in the open, not trying to hide our, our bad practices. So that's where I'll kind of end those comments today. So moving on to future meetings, our next meeting to conclude this academic year is on June 26th, and then lastly, we'll move on to 23, adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move approval.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no, and we adjourn.